Welcome everyone to the December 12 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone in this room and at home. And we're going to be, our first item is a really important one. It's been very much in the minds of many people. It's Occupy Eugene update and reconsideration, I guess I should say, explain to everybody that we're going to have the discussion about the issue at the work session, but the actual motion and decision will be at our 7:30 meeting after we have a chance to have a forum and all of those kinds of things. So with that, City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. Council asked us to return prior to the December 15 expiration date with an update and assessment of the Washington Jefferson site. Since your approval of the Washington Jefferson site on November 9, several things have occurred. Pete has provided you with an almost daily report. Staff has met with Occupy Eugene representatives several times to discuss the current site and the transition from the current site. Staff and OE representatives have worked together to try and address various health and safety concerns and non-health and safety concerns such as sign code violations. The working relationship between OE representatives and city staff has generally been positive and constructive. I've asked Pete and Stuart to provide their assessments of the site conditions as you asked, after which I will outline various options and provide a recommendation. So Pete?
Hello Mayor and councilors.
Hello.
First of all, I really need to, it would be impossible not to arrive at this place without taking a moment to compliment the work of the Occupy Eugene representatives who've worked closely with the police department and city staff. City Manager Reese and I have met with representatives and it hasn't just been symbolic, we have been collaborative and cooperative and respectful and it's been a good positive relationship, although we don't entirely agree on the direction to go in. And since it became evident that the Occupy movement had found ways to benefit the situation for homeless people, I among many others have been excited about the momentum that it could create to help us as a community work better with the homeless. There's no question that some innovations have occurred in the Occupy Eugene encampment that could be applied to our decades and decades of work with the homeless here in Eugene. And so I think many of us are looking forward to seeing how those can work together. The purpose of my report tonight and the reports that you've received from me by email have been from the perspective of a chief of police who needs to be concerned about the safety and welfare of our members of our community, which include the people who live in the camp. And also my perspective as the chief, concern for the welfare of our police officers who work and walk through the camp and spend some time there. I'll just cover a few important milestones. First, on October 15, the encampment first existed in the park blocks downtown following a march where 2,000, about 2,000 people participated. The police department worked closely with the organizers and has worked closely ever since. It moved to the Alton Baker Park and what we learned from, what we learned from the organizers was that the population of people who joined the camp, who resided in Alton Baker Park was a rough group. It's a population of homeless folks who don't normally partake of services. They're people who are drug and alcohol addicted, some of whom suffer from severe mental health conditions or a combination of those. And managing the behavior of those individuals was difficult for the peacekeepers, for the people in the Occupy Eugene movement, they told us. And the location wasn't ideal for visibility. And as you know, they moved to the University of Oregon where the Department of Public Safety and other staff at the U of O worked with them and then ultimately to the Washington Jefferson Park where it was approved, where an exemption to camping ordinance and park rule violation was granted. Initially, the situation from the police perspective was good in the Washington Jefferson Park and in some ways it has remained very good. Normally, our officers when we visit the camp are greeted by peacekeepers who are helpful and cooperative. At times though, particularly in the evening, and this has occurred more and more since they moved in, were greeted with some hostility and suspicion when our officers walk into the park. The homeless population in the new camp has grown and it includes the three categories, and these are gross categories, of our local homeless population. That would include the homeless youth, and this is a group that does seek some services, but there aren't great services in the Central Lane County area for youth who are homeless. It also includes that population of homeless people who do seek services and who are provided considerable care in Central Lane County. And then that population of people like those that moved into the camp at Alton Baker Park, drug addicted, alcohol addicted, and those with severe mental health conditions or a combination of those. And as that population of people grew within the camp, we found the incidence of disorderly conduct, assault, and disruptive behavior grew also. And we've seen a steady increase in the demand for policing services steadily up to this And if I haven't already said it, the problems that police see are greater at night than they are during the day. As you've read in my reports, we encounter fires, warming fires, almost every time that we go through the camp. We ask that they be extinguished, they are extinguished, but relit almost immediately. According to the people working in the camp, peacekeepers and representatives and organizers and others, there was a problem with open syringes being left throughout the camp area and as a solution, and again I'm sharing this with you third hand, but as a solution, the camp organized those people who use methamphetamine into one portion of the camp and gathered their tents there and that's where they reside. And apparently that is less of an issue for them. The exposed needles are less of an issue. In one particular incident, officers followed the odor of burning marijuana, obviously somebody was smoking marijuana, which is very common in the camp, to a tent. And when they contacted the people inside, they found an adult man and several, or more than one child. The man was in possession of marijuana and methamphetamine and was arrested. We've heard from parents who fear that their runaway children are hiding or being harbored in the camp. We have found children who are runaways in the camp. We had a recent case of prostitution where an undercover detective worked with a man who was arrested for promoting prostitution. This is a 15-year-old girl that had been staying in the camp, had been in the camp shortly before the arrest of the incident, the investigation occurred. She was in possession of psilocybin mushrooms that she said that she had acquired in the camp. We've seen an increase in the number of reported assaults and disorderly subjects. Some of those reports, in fact everything that I'm sharing with you has come to our attention either by people who are driving by, people inside the camp, or based on the observations of officers who've done patrols in the camp. In one case, a man reported that he was assaulted by three other people and one of whom was holding an axe or a hatchet. That assault ended when that man's leg was broken, he was hospitalized and he was in sedation, I'm told, for some time and therefore unable to be interviewed by police officers. And this is an investigation, this is a case that's still under investigation. We haven't verified everything that he's reported, but it is a serious, it did sustain a very serious injury. We know that there are children living in the camp and we know that there are adults who are not their relatives living in the camp with them. We have received reports that there are sexual offenders who reside in the camp. We've contacted more than one of those and one was evicted from the camp last week when we identified them. We have received credible information from people who have said that property stolen in Eugene or in the central county area is taken to the camp and that a drug dealer purchases that property with methamphetamine or other drugs. We've also heard that bicycles are stolen, taken to the camp where they're taken apart, parts are sold, or they're built into new bicycles. This last Saturday night, our officers went to the camp, contacted some people who are chronic property offenders in Eugene who were in possession of bicycle parts that were apparently stolen. A number of arrests were made on Saturday night related to that investigation. Peacekeepers have told us that they're frustrated with the ability, the difficulty that they have at times managing the behavior of some people that are difficult to control. And as you know from the things I've said and the things that you've all heard, there are individuals in that camp that would be very difficult to manage. The camp has a process for asking people to leave the camp and not return those who can't control their behavior. I spoke one night while I was visiting the camp with a peacekeeper who said that she, while struggling with a man, had been knocked unconscious. People walk, people who are residing in the camp openly wear knives and there are axes and hatchets in the camp, which is what one would expect to find around camps where there are fires. But they are axes that in at least one case was used as a weapon against an individual reportedly. And I've said that I'm concerned not only for the welfare of the people who are residing in the camp, but also for our officers. It is a dangerous setting for our officers to go to because of the mental health, the drug addiction, the unpredictable behavior of the people who are there. Some of the violence that we've seen or investigated is evidence of the challenge and the risks that it poses to our Eugene police officers. The fact that there are so many axes available or hatchets is a concern of mine. And then the population of people who are very difficult, who can be difficult to manage are in close proximity, densely populated in a small space. The tents are, in some cases grouped together with large tarps over them, so particularly at night, this is a situation where officers can't possibly see all the threats that could potentially, that they could potentially face. And it's just a very difficult and unpredictable environment to be in. Now, what I have reported on are those things that have not gone well. There have been a great deal of other things that have gone well and as I've said, we've worked closely with Occupy representatives and they have addressed some of our concerns. Others are just so difficult to deal with, given the nature of some of the people who are residing in the camp, that I'm concerned, as I've said, for the safety of individuals there and of our staff that work through there.
Thanks Chief. Stuart?
Yeah, I'm Stuart Ramsing. I manage one of the divisions in planning and development, but I also hold the role of building official. And in the state of Oregon, we have uniformed state building codes. And those are the codes, the building codes are uniform across the state, have been since the mid-'70s, and the fire code is, with a few exceptions, also uniform across the state. So these rules that we've been looking at aren't unique to Eugene. And our office has then received some complaints which initiated our actions. So I've visited the site along with representatives from the Fire Marshal's Office on several occasions. The organizers were extremely cooperative with us. There was no problem with access to the site. It worked collaboratively with us to take a look at the entire site, which we've done on several occasions. Some of the issues that we've, we identified then when we went through the site, we were able to view the whole, the entire interior of the camp as well as the exterior. Obviously, a number of camp tents that one sees and the tents that are used for camping are not the issue. There are exemptions in the codes that allow one to use those, your typical pup tent type of structure. There's a large dome. That dome, as well as a large teepee, the way it's being used right now, are structures that would fall under the building codes in the state of Oregon. The dome is a framed structure with a thin nylon type covering. There's really no question whether it falls under the regulations of the code. The teepee, if it were used as an individual's tent or for their family, would similarly be considered a tent, but it's been used as a gathering place and because of the use, it changes the nature of that. When we made our tour, we did uncover a, literally uncover, a buried wire that had been tapped into the city's electrical system that ran the irrigation systems. We had that abated immediately. We had an electrical contractor come out and disconnect that from the conduit and the organizers then uncovered the rest of the wire and put that away, which we were appreciative of. So we abated that immediately. The kitchen area has evolved from what was initially just a food preparation area, then had some definition around it quickly just to organize their facility. It became more defined then with pallets and plywood and a number of building materials, cardboard sheets of plywood, panels are now secured. It makes truly walls, it's a walled-in area that has security and a door into it and all. So it's evolved from its initial prep area to an enclosed commercial kitchen essentially. And the organizers were very helpful with us to understand what was going on and seeing that. So there was no issue there. There were concerns though, what was in the kitchen, and we worked with the organizers to address that. The number of gas cooking surfaces, I think some people refer to them as the Kabbalah specials. You see, they're not unusual, they're for boiling water and cooking. They have since moved those outside for their cooking. If they're used as they're intended, as the manufacturer intends, and there's not a problem with that, they're in an open air environment. And with that, they have a three to five gallon propane bottle, a gas hose, and they can be used in the open. There's not a problem in the open. It does present a real and potential risk when it's in the enclosed because propane gases, really treat it like a liquid. It's heavier than air, it'll settle out and it'll fill up a space and can ignite, well, can explode, that's the concern with that. So they've been responsive to that. They've moved their cooking equipment outside and the propane bottles as well. Two of the large commercial stoves, last time I looked, that they had brought in there, were still in the enclosed area, but they disconnected them from the fuel source, which we appreciate. Because when the fuel's not connected, it's the fuel that presents the hazard and the cooking that presents the hazard. So the stoves unconnected are not the concern. The electrical system, I didn't see it initially when they set up, but I imagine there was some need for lighting. There is a generator there, a lot of extension cords in use and in piles. What I observed when I was out there making the inspection was an electrical system that is not so different than what might one, at least using the components from what one would find in a framed residence, in a stick-built home that someone is building in the city of Eugene. This is commonly referred to as Romex. It's a yellow cabled electrical wire. It's going from electrical box to electrical box. There are receptacles, switches, light fixtures and all. And when I was out there, the system was going in. It was, it was not fully in. Some elements that were energized, some were not yet. This is powered through the generator, through a series of golf cart batteries, inverters and all that need to make that work. We went back out several days later and asked that system, I needed to check a few things in my office, I'm not an electrician myself. And it raised enough concerns and real hazards. This is a real full voltage electricity, the type one finds in any commercial building or your home. And so they did disconnect that, which we were appreciative of at the time. What we're observing though through that is that inclination to add infrastructure. It's cold, they need light, add some light bulbs, you upgrade that to wiring systems and you start adding electrical boxes and the works. But they have been responsive to those concerns. At this point, we've addressed those concerns with them. What we have not moved to the next stage of addressing would be the overall building code violations. These structures such as the dome in the state of Oregon would require permitting to go through that process. And the types of issues, I don't want to overstate them or catastrophize, but they can be real. A dome like that may present a larger potential hazard to the community than the occupants. Those can blow away, they do blow away if they're not secured. So it can, it can blow into the street, it can blow over people, it can blow into adjacent neighborhoods, that type of an issue. It's not always the immediate occupants. It did have one way out, one exit. There is a, certainly a concern of getting out of a space, but more importantly maybe concerns of how the space is used with heaters that may not be adequate or designed for the space and a fixiation, heaters using the oxygen that's in the space, those type of concerns. So at this point, we are working, have been working, and I'm pleased to say collaboratively working with the organizers to address a number of the immediate issues. And to my knowledge, there aren't the immediate life safety issues, but there remain a number, in fact not entirely inventoried of just the general building code, fire code concerns that the Fire Marshal and I need to stay on, will need to continue to monitor that and work with the organizers if the camp were to continue, the encampment were to continue.
All right, thanks Stuart. From the beginning, I have maintained three objectives. Ensure that free speech rights are protected. Maintain a safe and healthy environment for OE participants, campers, city staff who interact with OE and the general public. And work collaboratively with Occupy Eugene to find new ways to address homelessness in the community. The movement has demonstrated social innovations and interesting possibilities for how we address homelessness in Eugene. I believe that one of the positive aspects of OE is the respect and dignity that they have shown to be unhoused in our community. It is a perspective worth emulating. Many of you have also communicated your desire to engage with both OE and the broader community to leverage the lessons and innovations of Occupy Eugene. Exploring these entrepreneurial ideas can propel our efforts and we should try to capture them regardless of your decision about the fate of the campsite. Toward that end, I recommend that the council immediately form a community task force to work over the next 60 to 90 days to identify strategies for council consideration. The task force could include council members, OE representatives, nonprofit agencies, and perhaps other community members. Regardless of how we move forward to address homelessness in our community, the health and safety concerns within the OE camp must be dealt with. As evidenced by Pete's reports and assessments, general health and safety are serious concerns and I believe they will decline at an increasing rate as the weather worsens, the camp population changes and services too and within the camp fail to keep up with the demands of an increasingly unhealthy and unsafe environment. Foremost, I am concerned about that a serious injury or illness will occur at the camp. Extending the camping exemption without committing substantial city resources to try to attend to the health and safety of the campers and community, in my opinion, is not a viable option. After considerable thought, I sent you four options over the weekend. The options are substantially the same as those in your AIS except with the added discussion of transition services and a community task force. Council has asked about costs and we have provided our best estimates. The four options, I'm not going to go into detail around those, you have those, but just so others will know. First is not extend the camping exemption. The cost of this option in terms of immediate and near-term outlay of city resources is minimal, but this does not, but this does nothing to deter the homeless from returning to their status quo. Second is to extend the camping ordinance, or camping exemption to a date certain and substantially increase city resources enforcement at the campsite to address dwindling health and safety conditions. And our best estimate at this time is that this option is a minimum of $190,000 per month. The expenditure would help address the camp's health and safety, but there is no guarantee that a serious injury or illness would not occur. The third option is to not extend the camping exemption and provide transition services until the completion of the community task force's work. Depending on the services included, this option might cost between $50,000 and $150,000. And transition services would provide homeless members of the camp alternative legal shelter options to preclude their return to the conditions prior to the establishment of the OE camp. And I know that not all of these services could be provided immediately and so there'd be a period of time in which some could be provided, I presume, and others not. So for example, temporarily increasing the funding for the car camping program and expanding that may be something that could be implemented much quicker than some of the other options. The fourth would be extend the camping exemption for 45 days, for example, or any other time certain to allow full implementation of any transition services. Depending on how long that lasts, the same $190,000 per month applies with that as well as any implementation of any transition services along with that. In forming a recommendation, I tried to balance risk and liability with the financial resources necessary to mitigate the risk. I understand and appreciate that people will weigh the balance between risk and resources differently from one another. Based on the chief's and my growing concerns about the health and safety within the current encampment, coupled with the city's financial situation, I recommend that the council adopt option three as I've outlined them here. Regardless of the council's decision, I believe that OE and city staff will continue to work together to address health and safety concerns. However, we anticipate the amount of city resources needed to do so will continue to increase. And with that, we're available for questions.
Okay, I've got Alan, Pat, Mike and Andrea in the queue. Alan and George.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to compliment the City Manager, the staff, the chief, EPD, as well as the Occupy Eugene folks for their cooperation and working together. I think it shows our community very well. I share the concerns that the chief has about health and safety of both the occupiers and EPD personnel. It's tough when you bring all those types, when you bring all those people together in one place and some of them have mental health issues and there's drug issues and alcohol issues and other kinds of issues. And when you were going through that laundry list of things that were going on, I was thinking, geez, you know, that's not really too different than our society. It's just all kind of in a microcosm right there because it's very visible. So nothing really surprised me too much. I appreciate the manager's thoughtful email on this. I talked to a lot of people, including two people in particular, who feel very strongly have a lot to say about this and a lot of experience in this, Terry McDonald and Richie Weinman. And after talking to all these people, I synthesized into a proposal that I'd like to throw out onto the table for folks to look at. And if the mayor is okay with it, maybe we could put this as a motion and then have it for action at the 7:30 meeting, give places for conversation. So this is in front of you, so I'll read it. It's modify option three that the City Manager recommended to extend the camping exemption by transition services until the completion of the community task force. Has six components to it. Where the first one would be saying that the City Manager, Mayor would immediately form a community task force to report back to the council in the 90 days on strategies about homelessness for council's consideration. Task force would include council members, OE representatives, nonprofit representatives and other community members. And second component would be hire St. Vincent Hall and lead, to lead an effort to mobilize and coordinate transitional human services for homeless campers and consult with OE about security and management of the OE camp. I talked to Terry McDonald and he's willing to do that. These transition services won't replicate what is happening at OE, but they could provide opportunities for the OE homeless campers to receive basic services such as a legal place to camper stay, food, clothing, medical services while the recommendations come back to the council. Third is temporarily increase the funding for car camping. Fourth is create a short-term site like an even warming center for the winter to deal with chronic homelessness behavior and addiction issues. Fifth would, to extend the camping exemption, right now it's X days and there, so I'd have a conversation about that. And then the sixth would have the, if approved, then the City Manager would bring back a funding options for us at our next meeting. So should I make that as a motion Mayor?
Yes, I guess what we'll do is, we can have a conversation about it and then put a motion out later this evening.
Okay. So that's, that's what I've been thinking and that's where I would like to see us go with this issue.
Thank you. Pat, you're next.
Thank you Mayor. Stuart, thanks. That was a good presentation. I wonder if you could comment on, you've been in the restaurant, the-
The kitchen area, the food prep?
De facto, yeah, the food service area. Can you comment on what's being done with the wastewater?
No, I haven't been looking at specifically at the wastewater. Water, when I was there, they were bringing freshwater in jugs and they were collecting it. But I know some other of the city staff have been dealing with that and have addressed, raised some of the issues. I don't know if it's been adequately addressed. Sorry.
Were you able to notice that they were cleaning and sanitizing the equipment and the utensils?
I was not inspecting that, so I did not look to that. I was looking at the structure.
Then I'll ask the City Manager if he can have some comments on that from other staff members perhaps.
Jim Bell's may be able to answer.
Are you able to address some of those?
I am, yes.
Okay, why don't you come on up and, or at least have the microphone, that's fine. Please stay here.
Thank you. What was the question? To sure she can address it.
Two parts. One was a question regarding what is being done with the wastewater, the gray, soapy, whatever water. And are the utensils and the equipment being sanitized?
Right. When we were out there, I was there with Lane County Environmental Health and they did an inspection of it. The wastewater was being put into gray barrels, I think that's the official term. So they were dealing with it appropriately per environmental health. And for the sanitizing of the utensils, at least some of the kitchen equipment, they were doing the three sink method, which was, you know, the dish soap, then the bleach, then the rinse bath. I don't know.
Okay. Can anybody comment on how many gallons are being stored? Anybody from staff? Okay. Because, you know, I, when I was with Food Lane County, we occupied the diner downtown, and we did a lot to obviously maintain food safety, food poisoning issues, other health issues. And it took hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of gallons of warm soapy water to sanitize the equipment, to make it safe for use. And I'd like, it sounds like we don't have anybody here who can give a full rundown on that, but I'd like to hear more from some staff on that. The second is, I would like to comment on something that's on forum lane about how's the city handling the Occupy Eugene. A poll was taken, and sixty-seven percent of the people of Eugene approve of the way police and staff have handled the Occupy Eugene issue, with twenty-seven percent opposing. I think that's a pretty outstanding commentary from the City of Eugene, that they approve the way the staff and the manager are handling the situation. The last question I have, assuming that I will hear more on wastewater and the storage of the thousand, how many gallons are they storing? The third one is about option three, which is your recommendation. And option three, you're saying is fifty thousand to, can you comment on the cost of that again?
The cost that, for transition services, for some of the things that have been emerging is, it could be fifty thousand up to $150,000. Depending on the extent, some of it, it could be more if it's a much more permanent kind of structure. But, for example, some of the initial estimates to expand or to provide more camping opportunities and transfer into tents, and it would require some additional staffing from our agency partners. And for a longer-term program, that could be a $50,000 program for a year, for example. So, the, for a shorter term, that'd be an example of that.
Great. So, the top end of that, $150,000, pretty familiar number, actually, $150,000. It's coincidentally about the amount we asked to help us with the human services funding, funding the supplemental amount each year on the budget, about $150,000. Right now, we have agencies wringing their hands, asking for money, and agencies like Central Latino losing their funding because we're not able to give them enough money. We're talking kind of offhandedly about a hundred, up to $150,000, which is the amount that we look for annually in our budget to help supplement our human services. That money is in danger. We're likely going to lose that money, or certainly going to be debating that $150,000 when the budget cycle comes around this year. That's $150,000 that goes to human services throughout the entire county. And to talk about it kind of offhandedly as a temporary quick solution to an ad hoc issue, it kind of, kind of isn't the wrong way when we have people who have been providing services who are not getting the funding that they need to provide services that have been provided throughout the county. Thank you, Mayor. The second round.
Hey, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. When we first had this discussion about extending or, and waiving the camping ban, I have thought it was a monumentally bad idea from the start. I still do. I don't believe it's necessary that we, that we waive that in order to allow people the right to protest. But when we had the initial discussion, it was centered around the idea that the protest itself, the issue of camping itself, was the necessary part of making a statement. And that was kind of the justification for the reason we did this. I think that now for us to be talking about this in the sense of how many hundreds of thousands of dollars we need to spend in order to deal with it, I think we should have had that conversation upfront. I think it was never intended to become this when we had the initial discussion about whether or not it was necessary for people to simply be able to camp to make a political statement. If the conversation instead had been, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars are we willing to spend on, to allow this group to make their statement? I think we might have had a different outcome, or at least certainly I would hope we would have had a different outcome. I have a couple of questions I hope I can get in the first round here. First of all, when they hooked up the electricity to the sprinkler system, and it was then disconnected, it was presumably operating for a while, I'm wondering why no one was charged with theft?
Do you know how long it was operating or-
I don't know how long it was operating. I can address the safety issues, but not the theft issue.
Well, if I go over to the, if I go over to the street lamp in my cul-de-sac and hook up some wires and run the power into my house, I'm guessing I'm probably going to get a ticket of some kind, I'm probably going to get charged with something because that's theft. So, again, I'm asking, why was no one charged with theft in this case?
We could have charged them with theft, and we still could. But when we brought it to their attention, they disconnected it, and they have complied with the requests that we've made related to the kitchen since then.
So, we chose not to enforce that particular ordinance?
That's correct at that time, and, which is what we do every day. We make those discretionary choices in many settings.
Appreciate that. The permits that you mentioned that are necessary for a structure like the Dome, are they in the process of applying for those?
No, they're not in the process.
Are we in the process of requiring that they do?
No, and there's probably some questions around permits that, Glenn, you might be able to answer, at least some questions around permits.
The organizers have not applied for permits. In this site, the city would not be able to issue permits. The issue that, so far I've told you, the Greenway permit issue that folks have raised has not been, in my opinion, a bar to what the city has allowed, because so far what the council has allowed was an exemption to Chapter Four of the overnight camping prohibition. We have not issued any permits, so the Greenway regulations didn't come into play. In order to issue a building permit, structural code permit, which is what would be required, that would implicate the Greenway permit issues. And so, before we could issue a building permit, somebody would have to either amend the city's existing Greenway permit or get a new one. That's not a quick process. That's a three-to-six-to-nine-month process, assuming there are no appeals. So, if the council decides to extend the exemption, we won't be issuing any permits. The question is, what will we be doing to try to get the site back to the place where permits wouldn't be required? As Stuart was saying earlier, the site has been evolving. And so, when staff first looked at the site, building permits weren't needed. As they did more and more work, they eventually crossed a threshold. If the council decides to extend, Stuart and his staff will be dealing with enforcement related to that. If the council decides not to extend, then that issue becomes moot.
And one other thing I'll just add in there, you know, the council's direction to us was to allow or to exempt the movement from the camping ordinance. And so, we have diligently tried to implement your guidance to us, your direction to us more than guidance. And so, part of that, knowing that intent has been, is we have continued to work with the Occupy Eugene folks on a variety of issues, maintain a cooperative relationship, as both Stuart and the chief have said, as we brought things up, they have worked with us to try to resolve those. And so, we've been taking that approach as we move through, as opposed to a hard line, any particular item, we go in there and start issuing citations. So, we have tried to implement what we believe is the intent.
I'm sorry, I apologize, manager, for interrupting you, but I'm wondering, is there a list of things then, other than these two we've just mentioned, of ordinances that we've decided not to enforce that you could provide us?
What we can do is provide you the kinds of things that we have seen in the camp. The chief has mentioned some of those. I suspect some have been cited and some haven't.
Is there any coordinated way you could give us a report that's just strictly those things that we have decided or elected not to enforce?
We can provide you a list of the kinds of things that we have seen and that we have taken discretion on. That's correct.
One other thing, it was mentioned that the camp has a process for asking people to leave. What's their authority for doing that?
They don't have the authority to order people out of the park, but they have a process that they use to manage who's in their camp.
If I went in there and said, "I'm not leaving, I don't care what you say," what happens next?
You could remain in the park if you chose to.
Okay. Lastly, I may run out of time, but every, every single extension we've had here has the provision for the manager to shut it down at any time he wishes due to health, safety, life issues. My question is, what's the threshold? And I would like a second round so we can get into the specifics of what the council believes are threshold acts for you to do that. And I'd like to hear you first. What is the threshold where you would say, "That's it"?
I believe up to this point, we haven't reached the threshold, other than over the last seven to ten days, as the chief has outlined. I agree with him that the conditions have continued to deteriorate, and I think will continue to deteriorate for the reasons I mentioned earlier. And so, from my perspective, if we move forward and the council asks us to exempt it further, we will need to put additional resources into it to ensure the ongoing, to make it healthier and safer than it is now.
So, you won't shut it down, you'll increase what we're spending to enforce?
It, what I would-
Mike, your time's up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you put me out for a second round, Mayor, please? Thank you.
Yeah, we've got Andrea, George Pollan, George Brown. Andrea and Betty.
Well, I want to start out with saying that, as a Rolling Stone said, you don't always get what you want, but in fact, sometimes if you try, you get what you need. And I think that that's kind of where we need to go with this. So, I have four comments. First of all, I'd like to say, chief, you guys have, men and women of the Eugene Police Department have done an amazing job. I hear nothing but positive accolades from everybody in the community, whether they're for or against Occupy Eugene. There's been a lot of positive comments about how your crew is handling this, and I really do appreciate that. And John, along with your staff, I know you guys have put in a lot of hours, and I really appreciate that also personally. So, I just have a couple of questions. Chief, if we, if we look back in the, in the history of when we had the last kind of sentinel event around protesters, which was June 11th on Broadway, is there a dollar amount that was spent on that, just anecdotally?
In 1997?
Yeah.
There, I'm sure there is.
I mean, because, you know, we're talking about dollars here, and I'm, and I'm thinking, and I don't know a lot of the people who are actual, actual people who are living there, you know, a lot of the elders. And I just think that, you know, we could spend the money either way. We could spend it dealing with the bad outcome of a protest and having people fall from trees, people getting pepper sprayed, or we can spend money this way. But one way or another, this is costing the city. I don't disagree with that. That, you know, so I, you know, if we could just kind of, don't spend a lot of time on it, if it's easily accessible, I'd really appreciate that answer. Let's see, one, two, three. Oh, I get to call for service, actually, was my next question. So, you gave us a demographic, you gave us some numbers here of call for services. Are these, how are these being identified as totally Occupy Eugene, and are these above and beyond what the calls for service normally are?
We have, let's see if I can find it, we have given the, thank you, we've given the location of the camp and address. I want to say 243 Jefferson or so.
So, these are all at the site that these-
So, that's how we know which calls are occurring at the site.
Okay. And so, have, so are these above what our numbers normally are at this point in time in the community? Because these folks just didn't, you know, come from thin air. These people are community members that, if they have these social problems that are causing this kind of a call for service, they're out in my neighborhood, and, you know, George's neighborhood, and Betty's, and Mr. Clark's, and Council Prior's, you know, these aren't folks that are just only there. So, that's kind of why I was curious if there's like a balance sheet. But, okay, Pat, they're from Bethel, too. But, so they're out in the community anyway, so that's kind of why I was, I was trying to, trying to get a gift if, if these are above and beyond what our normal patterns are, or if these, or if this is kind of at the same level, level of enforcement.
Looks like it's at about the same level as it's been all year, which has been higher than previous years, although the number of calls for service in the park is higher than other places, probably because our officers are making six to ten visits a day there, and each of the, one of those is probably logged as a call for service.
Okay. And I have 28 seconds, and so I just want to make a quick comment about the funding for different social service agencies. I do agree that, you know, they're all bleeding for dollars, but, you know, it's not our, totally our responsibility. You know, the, we give money to the human services, and then the human services committee is the, or their budget committee is the one who decides who gets the dollars. And, you know, if we could say who gets what, that's a different story. But, you know, we're going through a process now that, you know, we're trying to figure out how to, how to do this more equitable across the community. And, you know, it's not our choice on who gets those dollars, it's actually a county issue. And I'll go for the second round, Mayor.
And George Pollan?
Hey, I too. Chief, I'd like to thank you and your people as well, John and Stuart and everybody else that's been involved in this, as well as the people from the camp that are willing to cooperate with us and try to work through this. As far as the options, I don't think there's any question. I think the threshold, as Mike was referring to, has well been met, as, as we just heard. So, unfortunately, the proposed motion that Alan's putting out, I'm not going to be able to support because it's continuing on with, with the degradation of the Washington Jefferson Street Park and the conditions at the camp. As far as any money that's going out, I would really hate to commit ourselves to any funding until I know exactly where that money's going to come from, and whose program's going to get cut, and who's going to get laid off, and what services aren't going to be dealt with because we're going to have to come up with this extra money. I know you identified part of it is coming from the council contingency, that's fine. We don't need to go on any more out-of-country tours and, and cross-country meetings and stuff. We can use that money elsewhere. I agree with Pat, the part he was making about funding the social services, and in order to save time, I'm not going to repeat it. I also agree with Mike on his initial discussion of what this all was about, and I too made the comment that if we go down this road, it's going to cost us much more money in the long run to get us out of this quagmire. And if homelessness was such the issue when this started, the mayor and the city manager have the, have the privilege of setting the agenda, they should have brought this up on an agenda long before we got to this point, long before the Occupy movement started. You know, I am, I am aware that there's a homeless issue in this community, and I'm not saying that homeless people are bad, but the way that we've gotten to the point where we are is. We should have never gotten to this point. You know, the reports that we're getting from, from the chief on a daily basis, that's just a snapshot in time of what's going on down there. Police occupy 24 hours a day. The officers aren't down there 24 hours a day. So, what we're getting is just, to me, the tip of the iceberg of what's really going on down there. And I am really concerned about the safety of our people, the police officers, the firefighters, the public workspeople having to go in there and deal with this. It's not safe. I think we're leaving ourselves wide open for some problems in the future. You know, there was a local poll, there was a poll done by a local news agency just this afternoon, I read, seventy-one percent of the people that took part in that poll said it's time to close the camp down. Granted, we can continue to work on the homeless problem, but we don't need the camp to do it. So, I think it's, it's time that we made a decision and moved on with this. And there was one other point. Andrew, the point you were making about spending the money, going in and removing these people, I think either way now, we're at the point that if we continue on, either way, we're going to be spending the money not only for the transition services, but we're going to end up spending money to get rid of the camp once it's, it's time to be torn down. Second round, please.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for Chief Kearns, and I don't know how, how up to date your, your most recent statistics are for the data-led policing. But I'm just wondering, has there been a reduction of police contacts in certain parts of town, like say down, I'm curious about downtown? The reason I'm curious is because I've heard anecdotally from several business owners that they're having much less problems in front of their businesses since the homeless and the Occupy movement, I mean, since the homeless kind of glommed on to that, and they're not, some of the people that caused problems aren't, aren't downtown anymore. They're over there, or they're somewhere else. And I'm wondering if there's been a reduction of contacts in the Whittaker neighborhood? Or do you know yet? I mean, maybe you haven't compiled all the statistics, but-
Yeah, I've heard those comments also, and we haven't collected the statistics, or I haven't seen them yet for the period that the camp's been in the park.
Okay. I've, I'm just, I mean, this is anecdotal, there's, I guess, speculation on my part, but I've got a feeling that, you know, you, the troublesome element in the camp, the ones that you have to go in and arrest or pull out maybe for parole violation, you find somebody there, or the sex offender, or the, the guys that get in fights, they would, seems like they would be doing that anyway, but somewhere else. And you would still have to visit them, and maybe some of them you wouldn't be able to get to in time. I mean, you know, we had a couple murders of homeless people here the last couple of years. If all these people are, I'm just wondering if all these people are just scattered, they're going to become vulnerable to, to possibly even worse violence. years. If all these people are, I'm just wondering if all these people are just scattered, they're going to become vulnerable to possibly even worse violence than what's going on there. Now, I've been to the camp several times. Granted, it wasn't at night, and I didn't, I haven't spent the night, but it was peaceful and orderly. I have been to the kitchen. They're doing a great job, considering that it's, you know, not inside a building with all stainless steel equipment. They wash the dishes just like they would in any restaurant. They use handy wipes now, especially this time of year, to avoid, you know, contamination from colds and flu and stuff like that. So, it's very neat and orderly, and it's a little trashy sometimes, but they have a trash pickup crew. I don't know, you know, there's really never any guarantee against violence or serious illness, and that goes for everyone in this room, too. Anything could happen to any one of us at any time, so...
Big Mac.
Yeah, it could. I mean, really. So, I don't know that the potential for that to happen to somebody down there is that much greater, really, than society at large. I'm really not so concerned about that. I don't think that the statistics show that there has been a huge uptick in public safety problems or in public health problems. And I will need a second round, too, Mayor.
Betty?
Thank you. I'm, first of all, I'm totally in favor of free speech and the freedom to protest and without any restrictions, but I think that we never realized this was going to turn into a homeless camp. And if we were planning to have a homeless camp, there should have, we should have set out to do that and think about how to do it and spend a lot of time thinking about the drawbacks and the advantages and the financial aspects, all of those things. I'm looking forward to hearing, in the public forum, to hearing what some of the people here have to say about who's paying for things. I understood that there have been a lot of donations, and I saw somewhere in our agenda that cities paying $25,000 for porta potties. I've heard other places that people are donating money, and people are donating food and clothing and so forth. So, I'm interested in whether we really have to spend money from city money if it stays there. It's, I wouldn't have voted to have a homeless camp right there, but it's there, and now that it's there, we can't just say disappear. I've been reading stacks of email and talking to people, even at my pre-dawn walks with my dog, people talk, I rather, I'm listening more than talking. People talk to me. And I, right to the last minute before I came here, someone who'd been telling me we have to get rid of that called and said, "It shouldn't be there, but you can't just get rid of it." And she said, "You can't, it would be terrible if you just go and say, 'Everybody, go away right now.'" I got an email today from a woman who lives very near the camp, and she said that previously, and this is, I know someone's going to say anecdotal, but to me, anecdotal's another word for real life happenings, but she said that she, her front yard was occupied by some of these people previously, and her side yard was frequently used as a bathroom. And it isn't happening now that the camp is there. And she's been over to the camp, and she has eaten there, and she thinks it's a good thing. As for people who say they want to use the park, I don't know. The first day, the day, well, the only day I went to the camp, I walked from Fifth Street, I didn't know where it was first, I walked from Fifth Street all the way to the North End, and I didn't, I saw two people. And then I walked all the way back, I saw two more people. Didn't look as if it was being heavily used as a park, except for the place where the camp is. I don't know how I'm going to vote later. I'm still listening to people. I'll be listening at the public forum, and I would like to know more about whether we have been spending money from the manager, and I'm out of time.
And I can address that. Absolutely, the camp has relied on volunteers and donations for their food, for the paying of the porta potties and all those kinds of things. Our expense, primarily as police, overtime expense, and into the future, a lot of our expense would be in police overtime in order to what the chief believes, and I would support what we would need to ensure a healthier, safe, and safer camp. We also have expenses for people like Stuart and his people, the fire department having to come out there and spend some time out there. But as far as food and porta potties, we aren't spending city dollars on those that I'm aware of, are we?
I believe Parks and Open Space or Public Works did have a dumpster that we paid for.
Okay, so there was that, right. And then the chain link and the fence, but the food and all those kinds of things, they are receiving them from someplace else.
Thank you.
City manager, so if you thought about the public safety requirements that you were just talking about versus what Allen was proposing of perhaps having Terry McDonald come in and try to help manage the camp in a more safer way, how do you think that will affect the costs?
I don't know. You can talk about the...
I think the cost would probably range somewhere between where we are, what we're spending today for policing services and what the city manager suggested might be the cost. But we won't know that until we talk with Terry and see how well behavior can be managed.
So, I was just thinking about the difference between what it might cost for him to provide that service than for our officers to provide their services.
Right, and I understand what you're asking. It would probably not be that him or us, it would probably be a combination, I suspect, just sort of as it is today, but the St. Vincent de Paul staff would be much less expensive than police officers.
Thank you. We're going to go through. I've got Pat, Allen, Mike, Andrea, George Pollan, George Brown. Pat?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding the back of the barrels, just a question, if I could get a report on where those barrels are being, the water from the barrels are being disposed and how frequently, and how many gallons have been held in them?
And we're trying to find out some of that information, so...
Thank you. I appreciate that. Second, I just want to say, in my years of being executive director of Food, Poison County, we had zero cases of food poisoning while we were streaming 6 million pounds of food a year. So, it can be done if safety regulations, safety rules and procedures right here do. Handy wipes, whatever time of the year, don't do it. Safety goes a lot beyond handy wipes. It takes hot water, it takes soapy water, and it takes lots and lots and lots of it. Regarding homelessness, there's a lot of issues surrounding it, but if you go to Forum Lane, there's a link to the city's City of Eugene Chronological History of Homeless Efforts and Actions, 1947 to present. It's a five-page link, beginning in 1947, that has a long history of the caring and the efforts that the City of Eugene has historically put into homelessness. And it's, like I said, it's five pages long, and it starts in 47 with a World War II veterans' camp that was allowed in town. It goes through the Council Committee on Homelessness and Youth in 1993. It goes through Station 7, which was, which is a runaway youth lucking glass facility the City of Eugene put together, and that, and there, I would estimate, I don't have the exact count, there are probably 60 or 70 different elements of what the City of Eugene has put tremendous resources into, into working with the homeless situation. Needless to say, it's a chronic situation that will not go away, but I will say that homeless people exist today throughout the city, not just in the camp. They're all over the city. I was principal for a day at Calipoya High School a couple of weeks ago. There are homeless kids going to Calipoya High School. We get them in the morning, go to school at Calipoya. They're not living in the camp. There are homeless people all over the city. It's not just in the camp, and it's not going to go away whether we keep the camp or lose the camp. And the City of Eugene has historically put a great deal of effort into it, and I gristle to anyone who suggests that Eugene hasn't been one of the national leaders in working on homelessness. Thank you.
Allen?
We haven't solved the problem.
We don't have anybody, any company anywhere.
Right, and we're not close to solving it, and we're not going to solve it in this go-around either, and a lot of us have been working on this for 20-plus years. But my hope is that we can make some strides on alleviating some of these pressures on the city and also providing some of the basic services to homeless people, and make an incremental jump forward would be a success in my mind. I don't believe we've reached the health and safety threshold yet either, but I, if we don't do something different, we may need, indeed, get, I think it may get worse. There's really no good options that the city manager presented to us. Option one, which is getting rid of the camp immediately, I disagree that there's a minimal cost. I look around at all the different cities that have been dealing with this, Oakland, Portland, and other places around the country that have gotten rid of the camps, and their costs haven't gone down. In fact, I bet they've escalated quite a bit. Just today, Portland had to deal with another protest because, in part, because their camp is gone on the port. So, I think those costs are going up and they're escalating, and it's not cheap, it's not easy to do option one. I'd rather use the money in a constructive fashion and try to do something with it. The cost figures at $175,000 a month for the police. That's based on 24/7 policing, including overtime costs.
Yes.
All right, so the mayor was talking about, and item number two on this list that I've put out, is where St. Vincent de Paul and Terry McDonald would come in and, yeah, some good ideas, I think, about how we might do things differently at the camp. For example, the Egan Warming Centers have similar, or if not the same, people at them. You don't need 24/7 policing at any of those centers. In part, it's because, and my understanding is, it's related to the way that they operate those centers and the way that they do things. I think that's something that the Occupy Eugene folks can learn from the warming centers examples and what St. Vincent de Paul are doing, and that would be, hopefully, lower the cost of what we do in the center. So, I think that's worth investigating and pursuing to lower the cost and create more safety and more, and less open safety risks that we see for the folks in the camp and also for our own officers.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a constituent call and offer a suggestion that I thought was interesting, and I'd throw out on the table because I kind of sense where the votes are here, but he mentioned that there is a very large 10,000-square-foot building owned by Peace Health that's on the corner or nearabouts to 12th and Olive that is vacant, that has showers and bathrooms and could be used and is not a tax-exempt property and could be used for allowing people to stay when it's cold. Secondly, in response to one comment that was made by one of my colleagues, everything that I've read suggests to me that we do know that this doesn't work and creates more problems. When you cluster folks who have mental health issues and when you cluster folks with addiction problems jointly all in one space without professional care that they deserve, you will have inevitably conflicts and problems beyond the scope of what would be the case if they weren't congregated in the same location. Even Mayor Sam Adams, who I'm, you know, he's not really that conservative a fellow, but said as much recently in an interview that I listened to him about why they closed down Portland, is because, he said, inevitably, when you put folks dealing with these issues within confined quarters, you're going to have an exponential set of conflicts. I don't think these folks deserve to be treated that way and to be corralled inside of a fence in a mud pit. Instead, I think they deserve the opportunity to have, to be treated differently. I'm wondering, too, why the manager believes that we should step up enforcement and city spending rather than what you, what the original council directive was, which was, if you think it's beyond what we have currently budgeted to handle, and it crosses the line of safety and health issues, you should close it down. That was the directive. Where's the change in thinking that says we should instead now try and budget for some different sort of action, and where will the money come from in your initial thinking?
For me, what I have directed Pete to do, and what I am also trying to do with the rest of the staff, is comply what I think has been the council's intent with your various motions. And so, when you, when the majority of the council says, "Keep the camp open," I take that as direction to do what we can to keep the camp open. If it gets to a place where the health and safety, or the conditions create an immediate health and safety concern, then I do have the authority to close the camp. Up to this point, I haven't felt that there's been an immediate health and safety concern that requires the camp to be closed.
Okay, that's my next question, too. What defines as an immediate health and safety issue?
I guess I don't have a specific measurement.
Does someone need to die?
Yeah, I think that would do it, but I expect, no.
Does someone need to be raped?
I won't have an answer for you directly, Mike, and so I think we can fish for it, but I don't have that specific...
My concern is that we've, we've, I've heard my colleagues say that the safety provision here is that with, we've extended the waiver on enforcement and empowered the manager to shut it all down if there's a problem. And I'm not hearing where the threshold of a problem is sufficient that I'm feeling safe that folks are going to be protected. And so, I'm wondering, where's the threshold? And I'd really be interested in my, hearing what my colleagues think the threshold is, too. What has to happen for the manager to say, "Okay, we have to close this right now"?
Well, I think the council, of course, can weigh in on that. For me and for staff, it's a bit of a more holistic approach to what's actually going on on a particular site. And so, and I think that's a judgment call on what happens and what the current conditions are. What I am saying, and that's what my recommendation does say, is I believe that the conditions are deteriorating, will continue to deteriorate an increasing amount unless something different occurs. Something different occurs, to me, is either, our recommendation was, is let's not extend the exemption, provide some services. Another option in here is that we increase the city resources to try to make it safer and healthier, and that that would be required to do it. If there's no city resources that we expend and we extend the camping, I think it will become relatively soon, or the holistic conditions there, and Pete will come to me and say, "John, I think it's time to wrap it up." And so, I think that will occur. What is the specific trigger? I don't know. I think it's the whole situation at the time, but that will occur if we don't put more resources into it if we're extending the camp.
Can you and the chief expand on why it is you believe, because you've both said you believe it will get worse at an escalating pace? Why do you believe that?
What I, what I have said is, one, is that I believe the changing demographic in the camp itself, as the weather turns, eventually, it's going to be wet, and it will never dry. It's just going to be wet. It'll be colder, and I think that raises the specter of fires and all of those kinds of things that occur. I think potentially we have more people gathering in the camp, and as more and more people are gathering in the camp in a denser location, I think that just creates more dynamics that are dangerous. And then I think as the, that the, that the support systems that are in place and have been in place, as the, as you start to deteriorate, some of the conditions require more and more support, and I'm not sure that the support systems, will be enough supply of the support to meet the demand that comes with that.
As more people come, do you believe they'll come from out of this area?
Mike, another round?
Yes, please, Mayor. Yes, no?
They could. I don't know. I wouldn't speculate to where they would or wouldn't come from, but they, could they? Yes, of course they could.
So, before I call on Andrea, I just wanted to recall a couple of things. And one was that originally, when we had the original protest and the march with several thousand people, the goal, I believe, of the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the goal of the chief and the manager was, and the council at that time, was that we'll try to handle this as cooperatively and as peacefully as we can. And the decisions that came after that were for that reason. And the original costs that we always see on our sheet for a lot of the overtime for police are connected with those original demonstrations, not the campsite. Although the costs for the campsite have been...
Increasing.
Increasing over time. And then, I think we all know that we had homeless pressures in this community building. I certainly know that in neighborhoods and parks all over the community before this occurred. So, it's sort of a synergistic thing of that building in the community and this occurring at the same time. And I don't think that, like Betty said, I don't think people thought about that, it's going to become such an effort with the homeless, but in fact, those things came together, they have all over the country. And then, I know when the Occupy Eugene people have talked to us, they have said that they, they're demonstrating... demonstrating about the inequities in this country and that they felt like they wanted to do more than just talk about it, that they wanted to do something that really dealt with some of those inequities. So they see this effort to help the homeless as part of sort of walking the talk. So that's, and then I just want to express my appreciation for Mike's comments, speaking kindly of those who need service, because I think, I really appreciate hearing that because I've heard a lot of talk isn't that nice. So I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate Pat speaking up for the city's work on behalf of the homeless. But I'd also say that I don't know any social service in town that doesn't think we need to take another step forward. So while we appreciate what we have done, things are growing to the point that we have to build some capacity somehow, and this seems to be a moment of trying to figure out how we can use what's happened here to build some more capacity in our community. It's not, people being homeless is not a punishment to us. It's really a condition that is occurring for a variety of reasons in many people's lives. And we just all have to remember that while this is happening, the rehab services are going, have gone away, the kind of services for people with mental health issues are all but not there anymore. So we have a, we have a lot of things happening at the same time that are putting pressures on and they all, dealing with them even in a small way, cost, resources. It's just the way it is right now. It's not something we made. Okay, Andrea, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to respond quickly to Councilor Clark's comment about Peace Health having an open building. I think Peace Health has given more than their fair share of help to this community, and I think that that, you know, I know it was kind of tongue-in-cheek, but I just want to say I think that they've done more than their share.
If I even put Civic Stadium in there.
I'm just brainstorming, Andrea. I'm just brainstorming.
So what I, what my, so, you know, I looked at Allen's modified option three, and what's missing for me from this whole conversation is accountability from the Occupy Eugene people. I need to know what they're willing to do to meet us halfway, because I feel like, and I hear from some community members that it's a free-for-all. I know it's not, but that's the impression that people get. And so I, when I made my little comment about getting what you need, you know, my first comment, I'm serious about that. I want to know what they're willing to meet us halfway on, because I don't know that if we offer these things, if they're willing to take it. And I need some accountability from them, you know. Their, the whole idea of us doing whatever it takes to make them successful doesn't work for me if we don't have a meeting of the minds and a meeting of halfway. So that's what I need to hear, and I need to see it, you know, in whatever motion. I mean, that's what, for me personally. I like the idea of your motion, Allen. And also, I also wanted to make a comment. I've talked to a couple people from Occupy Eugene who are willing, who were, who sit in the financial, financial piece of it and board or whatever they're calling themselves, and they are looking at ways to put money back in, and they were asking me what my thoughts were, and I told them to contact the city manager, Sarah, you know, because they were looking, you know, can they pay for the fencing or what else can they do? Because there are donations coming in to support this, and they do have some funds they're paying for different things. And so I think that if they're willing to, you know, put some skin in the game, we should allow them to. But really, I really want to know, I want some accountability from Occupy Eugene. I want to know what they're doing within their own group to make their area a safer place. Us going in and telling them, here's St. Vincent de Paul, if they don't want to work with that, if that's not coming from them, if that's not, they're not a part of that conversation, then this is all for naught. They need to meet us halfway. That's pretty much where I'm at. I'm willing to support looking at motion three as an ongoing way to try and get somewhere. But if there's a thought that we're just going to let it be the way it is today and continue to fund overtime for police and not really have any movement towards a direction, I can't support that. I need to have, I need to know what's going to go on tomorrow.
George Pauling?
Well, to address Mike's question about the threshold, I want to hear from his fellow councillors. As I said in the first round, I think from what we heard from the chief and from Stewart, pretty much puts us at that threshold in addition to what we're hearing from the public. The one lady that her son was having problems with school, finally got back on track, and then the Occupy Eugene camp went up and now that's where he is, his grades have fallen off. The people at the Egan Warming Center that said they feel safer there than they did at the Occupy Eugene camp. Some of the people that actually lived and worked there have given up on living and working there because the conditions have deteriorated so far that they're no longer feeling safe or feel like they're worthwhile there. That, to me, they've met the threshold. Personally, I don't blame John for not saying, we've met the threshold, shut it down, because I'm sure there's a bunch of us at this table that would have jumped all over him for making that decision without consulting us first, even though the majority of the council gave him that authority. I don't think a majority of the council tonight would say, yeah, you did the right thing, if that were to happen. You know, and Betty, I too, I too, you know, feel that everybody has a right to protest. Everybody has a right to free speech. That's not what this discussion's about. And I think that we as a city and as city council need to continue to work on the homeless issue, because, again, somebody said it earlier, there's still homeless people out in the community. I drive up and down Colbert Road, drive down Willicanzy Road, I see the same people, the same homeless people there that I saw a year ago, that I saw six months ago. So they're not all coming down into the Occupy Eugene camp. Working cooperatively and peacefully, yes, we've been doing that with members from the Occupy Eugene. My concern is, if and when this ever gets to the point where it does have to shut down the camp, those are the people that are going to say, okay, we've worked with you, you've worked with us, we're going to honor that. It's the ones that aren't going to take that attitude, that we're going to have to forcefully remove them. And that's when you're going to hear the people from the Occupy Eugene saying, well, they're not associated with us. They're not, they're not part of our organization. Because if, the way Pete was describing it, it sounds like there's three separate organizations within that camp. So I appreciate the work that, like I said earlier, that you folks have done along with the people from the Occupy Eugene, but there's going to come a point in time where someone's going to have to draw a line in the sand. And, you know, one way or another, that's, the camp's going to have to be closed down. That's all there is to it. And as far as calling somebody in to manage my camp or manage the camp, in my opinion, it didn't work in 1993 on the pilot program, and I don't think it's going to work now.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're really talking about a very unusual, almost unique situation. Something like this really hasn't happened in the country for quite a while. And the Occupy movements started off as political protests, occupying a space in downtowns, and the homeless people discovered, I can go roll out my bag there or put my tent there, and I won't be roused, and I won't be moved on, and I won't be driven away. The number of people that did that, oh, I'm sure overwhelmed the various Occupy movements. I'm sure that was the last thing they were thinking of when they decided to start the political protest. I'm sure they had absolutely no idea that hundreds of homeless people would accompany them because it was a safe place, certainly initially at least. And so this, the camp here is, and I think they've done an admirable job of dealing with it and trying to take care, and take care of those people and help them take care of themselves. They've moved several times now. They're at the park, they're on a very busy street, it's very visible. It is messy sometimes, it does look tacky. People generated a tremendous amount of anger from some of the citizens. Some of the anger, I would just ask those people not to be angry at the victims or the messengers. I see, I see the victims or the homeless people and the people, the vulnerable people that are there, they're the victims. The messenger, the Occupy Eugene people, they're pointing out some of the major flaws in our society and our system that are increasing these problems. I mean, the homeless problem, the city does a really great job of trying to, you know, address that, and the human services do, but it gets worse every year. The homeless count this year will, I mean, it's what, 4,000 people? It'll be more this year, I'm sure. There's more homeless children. It's a terrible problem, and it's being spotlighted now accidentally by the Occupy Eugene people. Like I said, I'm sure this was not the original intention, and actually, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think it's good to move that forward because really, this is our most vulnerable populations. And, you know, we're kind of at square two now. We have an opportunity, we don't know how it's going to work, but we have an opportunity to move to square three, whatever that's going to be. And if we just do an eviction, we're back to square one. Or actually, maybe even below square one because people's hopes and expectations will be shattered, and they'll probably feel worse after that than they did before this whole thing got going. So we need to grant some kind of an extension to allow the human service agencies to work together and try to figure this whole thing out.
Time.
And I don't know how long that's going to take. Thank you.
Chris?
For me, this boils down to a question of what next? That's really what this is, what next? We can, we can try to relive what's happened in the past and decisions, second-guess them, and I can't do that. It doesn't work for me. I don't, I'm unsuccessful at it. So when I try to think about what next, I see it in terms of the benefits that people see from what's happened. I think at one extreme, there's folks that say, this Occupy Eugene experience has had no redeeming benefit. There's been no value to it, therefore, it should go away. That's, that's one extreme. And I've heard lots of people express that point of view. No redeeming value, it served no useful purpose, it should go away. At the other extreme, I've heard, it is nothing but good. It has done nothing but great things, and it is a wonderful utopian greatness. And I think that's equally unrealistic. The truth is always in the middle somewhere. And so for me, when I try to approach what next, it's from the standpoint that it's not an infinite extension because it's utopia, neither is it, and need to get rid of it tomorrow because it had no redeeming value. I am aware that there are some positive things that have happened there, particularly around youth. There have been some good things there with regard to homeless and runaway youth who traditionally just hang around the mall, and they have been brought into the camp and have been given work. You've seen it, other folks have seen it. And I think that some of those benefits around youth are things that might be worth trying to figure out some solution for, and I think is what you're trying to get at with option three, whether it's the original version or whether it's Allen's modified version. There's an effort to say, what next could include, an effort to try to preserve some of those things that have worked well, even as we have to deal with those things that haven't worked well. And like many others, one of the things that, for me, has not worked well is the current location. I think that is becoming more and more problematic. It doesn't work in the long term. And I think even folks within the Occupy group would say, for the long term, that location also doesn't work. But I think part of what they're seeking is to say, if we want to try to retain some of what this effective piece is, can we do that in some other place? Can we do that in some other way? That is what we are struggling with. What does that other way look like? Does it require a physical camp in order to do that? Some folks say, yes, it does. Some folks say, no, it doesn't. What we're trying to struggle with is, where can we retain some of that, and does it require a camp in order to do that? I still want to be able to hear what might be some of our options, but I know as a fact that the City of Eugene is ready to work with the Occupy folks to figure out a solution for some of these things, bringing in human service providers, being able to work on something, whatever the outcome is with regard to the physical camp. So I find, I'm optimistic about that. I'm hopeful about that.
Okay, I've got, next round is Mike and then George Pauling.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate what Chris is saying about what's next, and I have tried to be as pragmatic about this as I can throughout the entire process. I tried to look at it at first as, okay, if this event is a protest, then that's fine. Why do we need to camp in order to have a protest? And look at the pragmatic issues involved in the decision-making. I think what we've allowed to grow here has now created a situation where we have a ticking time bomb at Washington Jefferson Park. And I think that extending it for 60 and 90 days will, as they've found in so many other cities, inevitably lead to some catastrophic outcomes. And I don't think it's responsible for the city to enable that. Now, one of the interesting pieces for me, too, is that I made a gigantic deal at the very first discussion of this about whether it was an event or a group. And I was assured that this was an event, and asked about it from the standpoint of whether we were conferring a special sort of right to a particular group to be exempt from the law, and I was assured up and down, it was an event. So now I'm hearing that it's a group, and if we can get some assurances from this group that they'll behave in a certain fashion, then we can provide a different level of services than we have and/or that they can participate with us. And I'm struggling with that change in definition about what we're dealing with here. I'm absolutely, as I've been from the start, willing to fight for people's right to protest and to be heard and to speak, but I'm absolutely not interested in subsidizing a protest. And if this is a protest, and if this is someone wanting to speak, that's fine, that's fantastic. But I don't think the city should officially endorse and subsidize someone's protest, which is what we're talking about doing. If, in fact, the homeless services are part of the event and part of the protest, we're now supporting it when we're talking about doing that, and I have a problem with that. I probably won't be voting for anything that includes new levels of spending without the manager being able to, or other councillors being able to identify, as George said, some very specific offsets. Where's that money coming from? What are we going to cut? Before I would ever be willing to vote on any new level of funding that would be required to do this. Thank you.
George?
Very well said, Mike. I agree 100%. One last comment on my part. If and when time comes to close the camp, and there will be the people, like I said, that will voluntarily leave because basically it's kind of an agreement that you've worked out. And if and when the police department has to go in and clean up the rest of the mess, we as a council better be prepared to stand 100% behind our police department for the action they have to take. I'm not saying just completely throw away all the rules of the game. I mean, you still have to follow the training and the rules and no abuse and all the other stuff that goes along with this. But once that, once we do have to send in the police department, we need to stand behind them because everybody in this community, everybody in this community is going to play Monday morning quarterback with the actions that the Eugene Police Department takes to clear up that mess, and we better be ready to support what they do. That's all I'm going to say on that issue.
Pat?
What we ask them to do?
Oh, I thought I asked.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief on this. You know, we have a vision, Eugene City Council, and I noticed this when I came by at the council. It's up on the wall there, the Eugene City Council. Really, I don't know how frequently we look at this. I look at it occasionally, and the second one says, be responsible stewards of our physical assets and natural resources. We will sustain our clean air and water, beautiful parks and open spaces, livable and safe neighborhoods, and foster vibrant downtown, including a stable infrastructure. That's a part of the discussion that we're having today, is how are we being responsible stewards of our beautiful parks and open spaces? And how are we making sure that our neighborhoods are livable and safe? So the, we should, I take a look at that every now and then, and I think it's, I think it's strong words. Very few words up there, so every word counts.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, so I agree with you, George. I think all of us do stand behind the police department, and I don't know that anybody will pay money back quarterback, because I do think that this is a very tenuous situation that can go very wrong very quickly, and we expect the best from our police department. And I know I, for one, will be in support of them outside of any egregious acts of them not staying within policy. I just want to reiterate that I really need to have some kind of meeting halfway from Occupy Eugene as far as what they're going to do and what their transition plan is. I don't want to give the impression, I understand it's a protest, but I also think, I also, in my mind's eye, what I think is if any group of people would have gotten together, Latinos, African-American, Asian community, anybody, and said, we're taking over this park and this is what we're going to do, we would still be having this conversation about, and they invited the homeless to be a part of it, I still think we'd be having this conversation. So it isn't that it's just Occupy Eugene. I think that any organization that would, you know, if we move those players around and think of it in that mind, I think we'd, I personally would still be supportive of their efforts. But I, what I want- But I, what I want to hear from them is their contingency plan on how they plan to move on and how they themselves are going to have some accountability within their own structure of organization. That part is really important to me.
Anybody else? So we'll have whatever motion you choose to put forward at our 7:30 meeting, and in the meantime, perhaps we could shorten our agenda.
Do we not have a second thing on our agenda, Mayor?
Yes, but we only have a half hour here.
Okay, so we're not going to, okay.
But we could, we could.
We'll add it on Wednesday.
We could make a motion to get the consent calendar approved.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. In opposition? None? It passes. Okay, I don't think we can do anything else that's on the list here, so we'll take a break. Take a break.
Awesome.